Okay, it being one o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. Either in person or virtually on the Zoom meeting. Let's start with our pledge of allegiance first, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Probably what we will do is we will now do our first order of business will actually be election of officers for the 2022 calendar year. We defer taking these actions so we can have all of this here's present.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve resolution number 00122.
You have a motion and a second to approve resolution as stated, which as Commissioner Anderson serving as chair for 2022 and Commissioner Christopher serving as vice chair. Any discussion, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, so I will be passing the gavel, I guess, virtually at this point if I will move seats. I'm happy to move.
We're here together, we can see you better.
Is it better together? Okay, just take that off.
Because we have so many people in the audience to see it, right?
Okay, taking away Commissioner Anderson or Chair Chairman Anderson.
Thank you, Commissioner Sauter. We will move to the approval of the business agendas presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
There is a motion and the second on the floor, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. We will move on to the approval of the commissioner meeting minutes. There were quite a few minutes. Did you guys want to discuss any of them or do we want to do them all as one?
I made all my edits. I don't know if anybody else said that, but I remember.
And then edits that he made were very minor, so I didn't reset them that out. They were missing letters and words, no context changes.
Yeah, I have not, I have reviewed three of the four that we have, the latest ones, the December 28th. I've not had a chance to look at those, so I would defer, but I, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion at this point to approve the November 30th, December 14th, December 21st meeting minutes as presented.
I would second the motion.
Here is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We will now move into citizen comment till 1:30. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. If you are on the phone, star six to unmute. If you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand and I will call on you. Is there anybody who would like to make comment? I've got Peter Leon.
Do I start now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm talking, calling about the Board of Health and having reviewed what the 2022 is and taking a look at what our current is, I have some concerns that we are currently in a situation where the only citizen member of the Board of Health is a medical professional and we have nothing to balance that. And so I would hope that we would replace the retiring member Sue with somebody soon, considering that we're in the, I guess we can't say we're in the flu season because there is no such thing as flu anymore. I guess we're in the COVID season. And we may need the actions from the Board of Health. It would be good to have non-medical citizen participation in the board. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much, Peter. All right. Is there anybody else willing, wanting to make comment? Star six to unmute yourself or you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom. I am not seeing anyone. Maybe everyone's out plowing snow. Oh, Sherry Bosque.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Yes, I was out shoveling snow. I wanted to talk about economic, a plan that I was forwarded for the county and I don't have all the information on it. But when I read through the end of it, where it says what our county is going to focus on, it said, you know, basically the jobs that would create for people locally in Click Attack County. And those subjects were tourism for 1,727 jobs. Of course, this is projections. Craft beverages for 148 jobs, unmanned aircraft, 555 local jobs. And it came down to natural resources and clean technology for 721 jobs. But when broken down, it said solar would create no jobs, zero jobs for Click Attack County residents. And wind would decrease 10 jobs for Click Attack County residents. The main jobs for natural resources that it said produce local jobs for logging and forestry and wood product manufacturing. Also, it said that our county would focus on sporting goods and outdoor recreation, creating 105 jobs. So as looking at that, I just wonder how our county lost its way from that economic development plan where our county had decided we would go with tourism and craft beverages as and unmanned aircraft, forestry and wood products. And how did we lose our way with wanting to fill Click Attack County with wind turbines and solar farms from foreign entities that does not help our county at all? It poisons our land. You know, I'm not going to waste my time telling you again what these large solar projects from foreign entities do. It does not serve our county. The reason I bring this up is I'm hoping that the commissioners will get back on track to what was projected, I believe, as 2015. I'm not going to say that for sure. But this is your job to see that our county has a good future and that it's not wrecked our agricultural land. It also had agricultural in there for people. So this is your job to protect our future of our land. Get back on track with what the development said and let's do some tourism. Let's get some more craft beverages and some other jobs going in and not selling our agricultural land to foreign entities that do not give us that power and they do not give us jobs. They just hurt our agricultural farm. So thank you for considering what's best for the future for Click Attack Counties as you move forward in your decision making.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. All right. Anybody else wanting to make citizen comment? Star six or raise your hand, unmute yourself. I am not seeing anyone. Well, we have 20 more minutes. If somebody changes your mind in five minutes, I will remind everyone again. Otherwise, feel free to look at the agenda or go back to shoveling snow. How much snow is up there, guys?
Nine inches maybe. Far less than down in our part. Nine inches, here's probably six, so.
Oh, really? That's it?
Yeah.
I just walked into my, my house for the first time in nine days and it was up to my waist.
In your house?
Yeah. Close the door. Close the window.
When that storm first started hitting, you could see the radar bands flying over you and it didn't even start snowing until like 3:00 in the morning.
You were up at 3:00 in the morning watching it?
Uh, 2:30. Sleep's overrated.
I agree.
What was that thing called earlier that in
We are still in citizen comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, star six, unmute yourself, get our attention, wave your hands. We'd love to hear from you.
American Health Commission.
So I don't see any mics there, huh, Dan?
No mic still. We have a question in IT on if they have an update on time.
12.
We just said the 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Christmas was the last one, the 12th is the new one. St. Patrick's Day will be the next one.
Yeah, sorry, it was 40 minutes. I don't know, it's weird, isn't it?
Every random second is synchronized. It's like the lower motors kind of.
It's still got a code on it.
I do, Mr. Chairman, if I could have a moment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, issue I did hope to bring up. I think we've talked about it before, but I just want to maybe reengage with the board and make sure we're we're all in agreement. We do have, it's with the school at Dalsport that the school district has, is going to be surplusing the school, they're selling the school, the old elementary school to DNR to run their fire school and fire operations there. They had, the school district did go through a finding site plan to divide the parcel into basically three parcels, which was accomplished. You could look on the the county GIS map and see that. So there's parcels one, two, and three. The school district is selling the parcel one, which has school on it, to DNR. Parcel three, they are rotating, which is the part with the part of the track on it. And then parcel two was a very small, decapitated or less parcel that was created around the community center, which they are going to, they, our request was to have them transfer that because there was always some question as to the community building is a county facility, but it was, we had a lease. Because when the county gave the property to the school district back in the 90s to construct the new school, that community building was on there. And so that was how they kind of fixed that. And so they have submitted an MOU to the prosecutor. He is reviewing it, but he wanted to be sure that the board was, still that was the direction with that, which so would, the lease would be terminated. But we would actually get the parcel number two with the community center on it. So there would be no reason for us to lease ground that we now own. And so I just wanted to bring that up to have you folks take a look at that and be sure that the school district, because our lease, that, that lease is actually encumbers all of the property. And so this will all have to be cleared out before the school district can transfer lot one of the school to the DNR.
So clarification, they're just trying to transfer ownership of the, the small lot, sell it to us.
No, just, no, that was the deal was, right. Yeah. No, it would be, would be difficult for me to support us buying a lot that we gave to them.
Well, that's, that was going to be my question is if we gave them the land for a school and they choose not to use it as a school and now they sell the, sell the land. Was there a clause or anything that they would run the school in the, in the transfer of that? Have we looked into the title report to make sure? Because I know like when this came up with the ball fields in White Salmon and the school was looking at potentially selling that for, you know, a senior center or something. When they looked all the way back through it, they found that the family that donated the land, which was my family, that if it was to ever not be used for the recreational facilities reverted back to the family.
I believe it has passed, again, the title report and the work that's being done was actually being done by the title company.
So that's correct. The council for the school obtained the title report. It looks like the only encumbrance that we discovered was the lease between the school and the county.
Got it.
Yeah, if you're looking for direction, Mr. Canal, I have a fight, but continue.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it as well. I will ask again, citizen comment is still open. If anyone has anything you would like to bring up? Star six, if you're on your phone or raise your hand if you're on Zoom and you can have your three minutes of fame. I'm not seeing anybody. One thing I was, if you notice, my head was tilted to the side. I was looking at the building information for this past year and our single family homes permits are nearly double what they were last year and the year before, but our mobile home permits actually went down just a hair. So in in 2020, we had 91 single family dwelling permits issued and in 2021, we had 174. It's too bad it doesn't go all the way back to like 2006, 2007.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, Lynn.
Would you like me to see if we can compile that information for you?
Oh, you're busy. It's just curiosity for me.
Okay, well, if you do, let us know.
I am interested though, like the valuations, Lynn, in 2020 came out to $61 million of new valuation and we had far more single family dwellings and in 2021, it only came out to 39 million.
Some of that was based upon the scope of the project because that valuation is as a whole for all building permits?
So like commercial and
Yes, yes. And, and we had like some turbine upgrades and a few things like that that were substantially higher cost.
Okay. Yeah, I saw in November of 2020, there was $32 million, so.
Yeah, so that, the valuation is, is the big picture, you know, as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We are still in citizen comment. Star six or raise your hand. I see that Greg with Cease has his video on, but he's unmuted. Greg, are you, did you want to give public comment? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Clarification question. I know in the past we did do some discussion about citizen comment and doing citizen comment at 1:25. Putting it in the agenda that in 1:25 is five minutes of board comment. We were going to do that on the first of the year, but it's not on here and I wanted to know whether we wanted to do that or leave it the way it is. So that it can be, if we're going to do that, I would like to, I guess I would say have it on the agenda so it's advertised that way.
I believe we spoke about that the week of Christmas and didn't we agree that that's how it would be on the agenda is five minutes of board comment?
Right. I just wanted to make sure I remembered it right. And that staff had the correct guidance to make sure that that's on the agenda set aside for more comment.
Well, since we have six, we are just at 1:25 and nobody responded to Peter Leon or Sherry. I would open it up for the board for any responses. I guess I'd go first and I spoke with Peter a bit on the phone and we had the discussion this morning about the Board of Health and expanding the members, especially with regards to the tribal members and where we're going to go that direction. I think we as a board, maybe on Thursday, since we're going to have a budget discussion, maybe we can also talk a little bit about what each of us see the expansion of that Board of Health to look like and see if we can start getting direction. What do you gentlemen think about that?
I'm fine with it, sir.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds like a plan to be as well.
All right. And then in response to Sherry, those numbers, tourism, unmanned, natural resources. I do believe that was the current number of jobs in those sectors. Dave McClure may be on the line and may be able to, to let us know about that.
I'm on the line, but I'd need to go back and look at that, look at the data. I, I think you're correct, but I need to confirm that.
Okay, thank you. And that was my only response.
Mr. Chairman, I can add to that, that of the things that were quoted there like tourism and whatnot, those were not economic. Future thoughts for the central and eastern region. Those are for western region. The county is divided into three regions with different economic forecasts for each of the three. And the one that was red, red sounds really familiar with the web stamp that the central.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. Dave, Commissioner Sauter?
Yeah, I think I would, that would be my recollection as well. I believe Ms. Bosque is quoting out of the strategic economic plan, which was adopted, I, I don't know, 15, 16, somewhere in there. I believe Commissioner is correct that those numbers are the current, were current jobs in those economic sectors. That that plan does break the county into three regions, west, center, and east. The tourism is a one of the preferred expansions in, in the west, in not in the central, eastern. Central, I believe, is clean energy, clean tech was the number one, which is in solar, renewables, compost storage and vineyards. And then east is the large agriculture vineyards, wineries. Perhaps some agricultureism, I don't, I don't recall, I don't think so. But I'm, I'm speaking Africa. But I believe that numbers referred to were the current jobs in those economic sectors at the time of the adoption.
Okay. There is time for one more citizen for public comment.
Commissioner Anderson, this is Mrs. Bosque. Do I have any time left on my three minutes?
You had 18 seconds left.
Okay, well, on this plan, I did see a project list and on the project appendix four at the end of this plan, it included the city of Golden Dell Airport, street access, city landscaping, municipal airport improvements, observatory hill, infrastructure, public safety. So those did include the Golden Dell area. So I, I'll look at this again and if there are three plans, I will talk about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If we've got one minute left. Tracy. You're a sweet girl. Oh. Tracy didn't want to speak, I guess.
Yes, I did want to speak. Am I, can you hear me?
You're unmuted, Tracy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I have just one quick question and I just would like, I would appreciate some, some clear clarification on what the purpose of classifying dispatchers as first responders rather than protective service occupation. On how it benefits the, the county. And that's my question.
Thank you, Tracy. Gentlemen, since we spoke first at 12:25, do either of you have a response to that? Okay. Is that you, Jeff, that just unmuted yourself?
That's correct.
Go ahead, please respond, Jeff.
Yes, Jeff King, Director of the Department of Emergency Management. Communications officers are now technically classified under the federal and state workers classifications as clerical. And just recognizing that they are actual first responders was a gesture that myself and the county commissioners thought was warranted. There are efforts both locally and nationally to reclassify those workers from clerical staff, basically secretaries to first responders. That's why that was done.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, being as it's 1:30, we are going to close citizen comment and open a public hearing to consider imposing the optional sales tax, second half cent. And that, as said, any interest of taxpayer may be, may appear and be heard for against the proposal and we will open this up to, is that going to be our treasurer? Are you going to speak on this first?
I wasn't planning on it, but I can if you would like, or Jen can.
Okay, I just saw you in the room.
So Greg and Jen are both in the room, whoever you like.
Okay, I didn't see her. Okay. All right, I declare that the public hearing is open and for the consideration of the implementation, implementation of the second half cent of the sales tax and the elimination of the 0.25% excise tax in lieu of the second half sales tax and, and would like an overview from Jen, if you would.
As discussed during budget workshops throughout this last year, the discussion is we've had that the structural gap that we are now facing along with every other county in the state that some changes would need to be, to be made with various reductions in expenditures or increases in revenues and what option before us would be to increase the second half percent of sales tax. This increase was budgeted with three quarters of estimated revenue.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, with that, we are going to open this public hearing to public testimony, both for and against proposals. I can't see if there's anyone in the room, but I'm assuming not. So if there's anybody who would like to comment, please star six to unmute yourself or raise your hand, turn your video on. I am not seeing anyone. Sherry Bosque.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to make the public comment. Um, I would like to vote against the raising of this tax, sales tax. I would like to suggest to the county that you explore moving renewable energy from the cost-based taxing system back into the income-based tax system. And as you've been explained to before, and I don't think it's the citizens' responsibility to explain to our county how these two tax systems on renewable energy can produce a lot more income for Click Attack County as it stands at the cost system, these wind and solar companies get to get a depreciation each year and the county citizens make up for that. So if Click Attack County would move back to, I don't know what year it was moved, I, I believe I heard 2014 from income to cost. If Click Attack County can move back to the income tax method for our renewable energies, you, the county can make a lot more income from these renewable energy companies and being that these energy companies are foreign entities and such that are not helping our county with electricity. It would be good if you would consider raising tax money for our county budget through moving the renewable energies back to an income method and not raising the sales tax to people in the county. So I, I think that would be a good solution. I'd like to finish by saying that the county commissioners should make a decision on what they hear from the citizens and if that's only from me, that would be the voice that you've heard. If that's from two people, then that's what you should consider as the people speaking and as you make your decisions to represent what the people want. And I am voting against the raising of self-tax in Click Attack County and our county finds a better method that doesn't hurt the citizens and that my suggestion again would be going back to income method to our renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Is there anybody else? Tracy is unmuted.
Hi, I am also against the raising of the sales tax. I believe that, um, that Click Attack County has been impacted not only by the COVID pandemic, but from the gas prices and the food prices and everything else going up, that just an increased sales tax would hurt the community much more than it would help. Much more than it would help. So I'm against it.
Tracy, can I get your last name for the record?
Wixman.
Wixman, thank you very much. Is there anybody else willing to make, interested in making public testimony on the proposed 0.5% sales tax increase? 7211.
My name is Greg Wagner with CEASE. I agree with Sherry Basque. The taxes need to be diverted to the large corporations and taken away from the citizens. The eight and a half percent annual depreciation on the renewables is ridiculous to have the citizens carry the burden of that and that no new sales tax is needed. You need to tax the people that are in the county making all the money and the big corporations rather than taxing the citizens. So do your job and tax those people that need it. The projects over $1 million under Canvas, Lund Hill, the wind turbines, the wind farms, the next Bluebird project, maybe Knight Road. All of these need to be done properly rather than putting the burden of taxation on the citizens. So I oppose any new taxes, any new tax increase, half a percent or anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I saw, was it Dave Barta?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for taking a public hearing, a public testimony. I don't know if you're able to or willing to answer questions, but I could not hear Jen Bartley as to the balance of the excise tax, how much money that creates versus the additional half a cent sales tax and how much that would create. Was that information given or do you have it?
Dave, we as the board will discuss this once we're done with the public testimony and I will bring that up. I was having a hard time hearing Jen as well. Okay, thank you, but we don't, when we're giving hearing testimony, we do not respond to questions.
Thank you. I guess I might input would be then not to raise the sales tax as one of the previous speakers so aptly said, everybody is suffering from an inflation tax on top of all of the other official taxes that we have. So I recommend that you do not raise the sales tax. Thank you for taking my testimony.
Mr. Barta. Is there anyone else interested? Peter Leon.
Thank you. I seem to recall hearing that there was a active opportunity where high-priced airplanes were being flown down to our county and sold out of the county so that they could take advantage of the lower sales tax. Will we lose that business? And I don't expect you to answer it right now, but you should look at it. Will we lose that business? And the sales tax that we would be getting if we raise the tax? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Is there anyone else willing and interested in providing public testimony on the sales tax increase? You may unmute your phone, star six or raise your hand or turn your video on. 5252, please give me your name.
Hello, Ryan Mel here. Happy New Year, Commissioners. I would like to also echo Jerry Buske's point and I'm against the stacks on a couple of levels. The first level being our county has already a significant disadvantage due to our proximity to a no sales tax state. With Hood River and the Dals being the largest cities that incorporate probably 80% of Click Attack County residents proximity. I think you'll just further exacerbate the sales tax situation and our consumers shopping in Oregon. And I don't think that a sales tax raise will help our bottom line. I think it will actually end up pretty nice because we'll have less sales and I think it will also be very detrimental to some of the businesses that are also attempting to stay in business here. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Is there anyone else interested in providing public testimony to the sales tax rate increase? Star six or raise your hand if you're on Zoom.
Mr. Chairman, Jen Bartley does have her name.
Oh. Jen?
It sounds like there, I just want to make a little bit of clarification. A little bit of additional clarification here. Sounds like there's some confusion. So the second half sales tax increase would bring the counties unincorporated areas up to seven and a half percent that would match Golden Dell, city of Golden Dell would match the city of White Salmon. It's a little bit be the sales tax that is already spent within the city limits. So just bringing up that incorporated area, we are the last county in the state to do so and we would still be the lowest sales tax in the state of Washington. I apologize for not starting with that.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Bartley. One more time, is there anyone else interested in providing public testimony for the second half sales tax rate increase? Star six or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. I am not seeing anyone, so I am going to open it up for clarification from my seatmates of any public statements or questions or if there are any questions of the treasurer or fiscal staff. Commissioner Christopher.
I would like to clarify some comments made during common period. It is not the Board of County Commissioners's job, its duty, or does it have any oversight in how green energy projects are taxed? Whether they're based on a cost system or an income system is the termination of the tax assessor in the county and the tax assessor in the county is working off guidance provided to her by the state. So the state says that they would like the assessor to use cost base. So that's what the assessor is doing. The commissioners cannot change that, cannot tell her otherwise. We are working with the state to try to get them to change their mind and offer different guidance to the assessors. So that's the first thing I would like to clarify. The second question was raised about airplanes and the sales tax rate we get off airplanes, which is true. The state is also working on new proposed legislation that doesn't allow us to do that anymore. So those planes wouldn't be able to just fly in gas up and fly home and then you get the sales tax. So my guess is by the end of this legislative session, people will be losing out on those airplane taxes. That's all I have.
Commissioner Soder.
Physically raised by, that's good. Yeah, I would just follow up on that. The concern that was raised by a couple of the commenters about the property tax system on renewables in Click Attack County is well-placed. That is, has been the position of the board, that the current taxing system on those is inequitable. It needs to be changed. It is not within the board's authority or power to do that. We are trying to work, it will take a legislative change to do that. We are working to try to change that. Although I do, I do have to make a point that the the commenters weekly comment on their reluctance to have renewable energy projects located within Click Attack County. So it seems a little ironic that the suggestion that the way to fix the fiscal problem is to tax an industry that you weekly are advocating should not be located. So yes, I, I agree though that if we can get some change so that we don't have that depreciation going on, that will not generate additional revenue. Because as those projects are depreciating, they're not paying the, the tax base is not going down. We're still collecting the same amount of revenue. It's just the who's paying. And so that in and of itself would have no impact on the fiscal resources of the county. So and as this Bartley stated, I like the, there is a structural gap in revenue in county government. This is not unique to Click Attack County. We are the last county to have to contemplate ways to be able to survive into the future. We're, we're the last ones to depart, but this is, there is a structural revenue gap in the way counties are funded in Washington State. We are no different. And so this is you know, one of the ways that we are looking at how to shore up that funding.
Commissioner Christopher.
Just wanted to clarify one other statement and ask Ms. Bartley if she could tell us what we would be losing with our giving up the quarter percent of REIT. I think it's about 430, but I will ask for her opinion.
Believe we budgeted that at 437,000.
437,000 would be what we're going to get with that if we give up that quarter percent of REIT. I would also ask the treasurer, isn't that roughly about the same number we get in airplanes a year, about 400,000?
We haven't gotten, it's not a consistent number, but we have had some that we haven't, we didn't really get that many in 2020. We haven't gotten, it's not a consistent number, but we have had some that we haven't, we didn't really get that many in twenty twenty-one. This year we just came out of, but we did have some hints from that. I don't think it was exactly that amount, but it was somewhere up in that range.
So potentially with, with giving up the REIT, we're giving up four hundred and thirty-seven thousand of tax base, just shifting that to a different collection point. And if we're not going to give the airplane sales tax anymore, we can give up another two, three, four hundred thousand of tax base there that we are, we are trying to make up for. But I think that answers all the citizen questions that I have.
Jen, would you clarify what it is expected to raise for the first full year in new sales taxes?
I believe that we budgeted the twenty twenty-two, three quarters of the year at one point two million additional.
So it'd be a full year would be like one point six, one point eight?
That's what I would anticipate.
And that would be raised from the unincorporated area. Because like Jen said, our cities are already at four point five percent. So the people in the cities will see no change. And we will still be the lowest sales tax in the state.
Okay. I will inquire if there's anyone else from the public wishing to comment. Star six, raise your hand. Okay, we are going to close the public hearing to further public testimony. And we will go into discussion by the board. I know that we kind of were discussing there rather than just asking questions. So it's a little interesting. But in, is there anything either of you would like to say?
I guess I would say that I'm not a fan of doing this. This was not something I came into this office thinking I was going to do. But after looking at the budget, the future budget of this county, I see two options. Either make these changes here and, and fix the revenue side, or you have massive staff reductions, which would then hurt the amount of services you can provide your people. With that and the fact that the the populations of the cities will not be affected by this. And that we will still be the lowest sales tax rate in the state. I reluctantly think this is the best option to serve our people.
Commissioner Soder.
I would echo those sentiments. I did not. I will reluctantly be supporting the resolution to to adopt this. It's it's not something I think any of us are really excited about doing. But I think we get elected to make hard decisions. And that it is, I, I see it as necessary that the alternative would be significant staff cuts, which would be cuts to basic services that our citizens rely on. I do see it as an issue of fairness across the county to, it trues up the sales tax rate that all of our citizens are paying, that we're all paying the same rate then. I think that the thing that I have drug my feet on the longest was the possibility that we were seeing the the promise of those sort of extraordinary airplane sales. Could be significant revenue from that, but with the P two, that's, it's basically a loophole and you know, there are, as we expected, that was going to be a short-term thing. And I think there is activity to close that loophole. And so it really is going to become a non where we're, that's not revenue that we're going to be able to keep. So I will, I will, I will I will, I will definitely be supporting this resolution. I think it's necessary. And even though it's hard, I think it needs to be done for the fiscal health of the county.
I would go back and add one more statement, but I think not only for the fiscal health of the county, but the future budgets of the county. Because we have to think past today. We have to think tomorrow, we have five years, ten years. And when you look at what's coming down the line in this county with just, let's say, radio tower improvements to, for to be able to continue our emergency services and whatnot, those costs are going to be forty million dollars. That if we don't start collecting today and saving today, we'll have no way to pay for those tomorrow. So just wanted to add that.
Jen, for clarification, when we did our twenty twenty-two budget, and most of this I'm saying for the public, we included in there this tax increase in our budget in order to really balance the budget, did we not?
That is correct.
And if we had not included this tax rate increase, it would have had a significant use of reserves, or we would have had to cut services significantly, correct?
That is correct, to the sum of one point two million dollars.
To the sum of one point two million dollars. With that being said, one point two million dollar cut to the basic services of the county, when we already required a three percent reduction in, across the board, on top of further reductions, both in staff for departments. I personally am going to have to sadly get pulled into saying yes to this as well. It's something I would never want to do, but the simple fact of the matter is, is that in the county, we get to raise property taxes one percent. Inflation's running seven percent. Our costs are going up. Our salaries are going up more than one percent. We raise about fifty-four thousand dollars a year in new property tax with regards to the general fund. The things in the general fund such as the sheriff's office, the jail, the E nine one one system. The increases alone are more than that goes up. This will create a buffer. And I will also make the statement that I am going to continue to do everything I can to find funds elsewhere in the future, such as with the renewable energy, such as increased economic development in the central and east part of the county, and supporting things that raise funds so that we can continue to provide the level of service that we're currently providing. With that being said, I would entertain a motion unless you two would like to leave this open to public, further public written comment.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We have a force of resolution on the matter of the local option sales tax second half ascent. That resolution would raise the local option sales tax point five percent. It would also rescind the resolution allowing for the point two five percent charge on real estate excise tax in lieu of the second half. Per, all of this per the RCWs. My motion would be to approve that resolution.
I would second that motion.
There is a motion and a second to rescind the resolution allowing a point two five percent charge on real estate excise in lieu of the second half sales tax per RCW eighty-two forty-six dash zero one zero print comma three, and to oppose the second point five rate for sales tax and remove the point two five percent of excise tax. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we are going to move to code compliance department update. Officer Lim Pratt. Lim, if you'd come forward. Lim, would you be able to email that to me?
Yes, yes, sir.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Pratt.
Does she emails it to you or?
I can listen to you and read at the same time.
Okay. So December twenty twenty-one, code compliance, closed thirty-four more cases.
Lim, would you use the hand mic? I can hardly hear you. And so I know nobody else on the Zoom can either.
Can you hear that?
No.
You should hear the echo.
Yes, just speak really loud.
Check. There we go.
There we go.
So December of twenty twenty-one, for co-compliance, thirty-four more cases were closed for the following reasons. Several cases, the violation letters were mailed to new property owners without formal complaint.
Would you put it closer to your face again?
How's this?
A little closer.
Okay, okay. A squatter was on the property, was trying to pay the taxes and the and the complaints were on the squatter, not on the property owner. Sheriff's Department did have previous, previously explained the eviction process to the property owner. This is a, was an ongoing civil issue. A letter of non-compliance, property was sold. Structure, so let me clarify that. So there's a letter of non-compliance on the property, and then the property was sold. So there's new property owner. Construction with
It turned off again.
Yeah, okay.
I can hear you.
So structure was built in nineteen seventy-six with permits on file. Structure was already in place. This was a Department of Ecology complaint. Still not, there we go. Seven compliance, or seven cases. Batteries are, I think the batteries are going.
I keep changing the batteries out. Turn it off and start yelling, I guess.
The other reason, so certificate of compliance on file. Another one, no jurisdiction. That was in the case of false, false vehicles everywhere down on BNS property. So we didn't have jurisdiction over that. Approval for non, for, excuse me, approval for onsite sentencing systems. So they had been approved. And that was after investigation was started, letters had gone out in this compliance on that. One of the cases is wrong parcel and then also wrong property owner in place. No violation in another case. Statute of limitations, so the RCW four point one six point zero eight zero limits the statute of limitations to three years. I, I am looking at these cases and Mr. Kenel, correctly, I'm on this. That if there's nothing that's been done in a case within the last three years, then it fits referred to basically statute of limitations for three years. So I don't know, that's the rule of thumb that I'm going with. So most of the fractions were issued in the court resolutions. Living in RVs, proved sentencing system. So people did have a sentencing system on site. And they're living in their RV full-time, and we've already discussed. Complaint investigation was on occupant, an RV, not a property. And I will say, yeah, and this is I want to be real sensitive here, but you know, when we cite people in non-hearing to look at the actual look at that county code states as far as citing property or versus occupant, in some cases, it does allow for that. In cases, you know, I'll reiterate, or I'll explain a little earlier, or later, excuse me, on health department issues. There is a adoption that we have with WAC codes that in, in some of those, I'll, I'll reiterate that, but where it does allow to cite the occupant of the property, more than of property. Two nuisance complaints submitted by the same person, one week apart. So those were the two, two complaints technically that is a violation of our policy. Washington State Department of Ecology has attempted on several occasions to pressure the county to open an investigation. A signed with that county complaint. I was informed that there are several counties that require outside agencies to submit a form sign, a formal signed complaint. During two phone conversations, one with a planner and one with a patient director for ecology. I suggested, and this was in response to, well, how do we fix this? How do we go about where we can just send you an email and you can move the investigation? So I suggested that the ecology submit a formal policy change to that county board of commissioners. But I want to say that if county commissioner is not required to, is, is required to submit a signed complaint form that you know, Clickcat County Sheriff, any prosecutor, any other department director is required as well in order to have an official investigation open for code violation. And I would think it only logical that an outside agency do as well regardless of the agency. And that is our policy. I will note that in past code cases, the Department of Ecology has submitted a Clickcat County complaint form, signed by, by biotech or somebody in their office. I don't know why this has changed. Now with their office.
They just refuse, you keep telling them that they just refuse to sign it. They don't want to.
Well, somebody doesn't want to put their name out there as being the I don't know. They, they never gave an explanation, but I, I will say I have, just on this issue alone, several emails exchanged from Ecology. And on the last email, this was a following up on an incident that they said they could not bulge the person that reported it to me, so I can contact them and give them a form. So they asked me where we were at on this particular case. Actually, it's not a case because I haven't admitted it yet. So I responded, nothing has changed. I cannot investigate this until I receive a signed complaint report. I explained this to your supervisor when she called me about that county policy. I suggested the Department of Ecology submit a request for policy change. I am willing to contact the claim, but if the policy is such that you cannot release that information, I understand. I have served thirty-six years in government, and the quickest way to get fired is to violate policy. There hasn't been any other email or contact after that. I, I want to work with them. And this has been an ongoing problem long before I got here. And, you know, with Department of Ecology in particular, and I understand that there has been some trimming of the edges, if you will. And, you know, with Department of Ecology in particular, and I understand that there has been some trimming of the edges, if you will. And I think that's where we kind of got into some murky waters on that and bringing us back in line to what our policy is. I don't make the policy out of it.
Commissioner Soder?
Thank you. It'll be easier when we're all on the same grid. Yeah, I don't. I think we need to adhere to our policy. It does not matter. I mean. Otherwise, we have created a way to subvert our system, meaning that a citizen can just complain to ecology. And then ecology, you know, just passes this on, but won't pass on. That does not sound like deep process to me. And we are, there's a reason people have to, if they're concerned about their. Confidentiality, we do have, I mean, those are kept in, they can be kept in confidence in your office where. And so again, I just think it's just bad. It's a bad idea to, why are, why are we, you know, waiving the policy for one? One specific agency, it should apply to everybody or it doesn't apply to anybody. And I think there's a reason why we have a process that people have to go through is to, is to protect everyone's interest. It is not, you're not just, you know, running to ecology to complain about something that you don't like. Or allegedly going to ecology. We have no way of confirming that anybody. Is saying anything. It's just ecology saying it. They won't even put it in writing.
And we can't confirm that the property owner, right, has a procedure policies of.
Exactly. So, no, I say we hold fast.
Mr. Christopher, thoughts?
I understand what ecology is trying to do. I understand what the potential complainers are trying to do. And while there may be an actual code infraction out there, if we start opening the door to. Letting, you know, you can do it without following policy or you can do it without following policy. You're opening a Pandora's box. Then you deny another organization for doing it. No, it's got to be fair. It's got to be. Across the board. You can follow policy, just like I have to follow their policy. So they can follow my policy.
I will give a little bit more background on this. I know that ecology has floated the rivers and. Written down everything they think could be a code violation or a violation of a state law. And then they just sent it straight. They put it in their system and sent it straight to us. They did not check first to see if there was a JARPA or WDFW issued any permits for any of these. They just forwarded it on as complaints, as a package of them. Without doing their due diligence. To me, that is adding, you know, burdens on our already overburdened department. Rather than doing their job to do their own research with other agencies. And that being the case, I fully agree with both of you that, as well as Lim's idea that. If you would like to make a complaint, you have to sign the form. If you are making the complaint as an agency, you have to sign the form. There's no fact track, fast track process because I know when we send anything up to ecology, we have to go through their processes. It works both ways. I'm sorry. And so if you're looking for a direction, I think you have clear direction from us, Mr. Pratt.
Well, there is another incident where the, so for ecology, wanted me to go with them, team with the property owner. And I checked into this, and the property owner had, was approved, gone through all those.
Can you speak up, Lim?
Yeah. So all the, they had gone through all the process with Quikattack County. I had a building permit, was going through the building process. And I told them basically that there wasn't a violation of, of the building permit that he obtained in Quikattack County. And that I wasn't going to be. Going to be used. Because they wanted to have a meeting with the property owner based on the riparian zone that they saw was an issue of riparian zone. When I went to both planning and building and double check to make sure that he was within the district, that's his building. And so I just found out, I said, I cannot meet with you. That's, in my mind, that's harassing our citizen. That has gone through our, our process. And so I'm, I guess I'm being due diligent to make sure that. Code compliance has been sucked into these side things with another agency. And I'll leave it that, at that. I can move on to my last, last point. If I may, or.
Yes, please.
Okay. So on 2021, there were 31 code cases that were opened with 18 of those being successfully closed. There were 42 open cases and 30, 53 nuisance baiting cases. So code violation versus the nuisance baiting cases. Some of those might be outside three year statute of limitations. I don't know at this point. And I do have a request into the prosecutor's office. Theirs are not, prosecutor's office, some of the cases that I've seen that were newer cases, but not go to abatement, if they were being investigated as nuisance cases. I changed to code violations because it's easier. In my mind to, when somebody has the definition of a record on the thing, we have a code. That, that says, and the definition of record versus trying to abate it through a nuisance, abatement in that process. The other one is also underneath the. The health department. So the health department, in a title of 8.14.010, which adopts state regulations. In handling waste, solid waste. And so when a, when a property has a lot of garbage, household garbage and that kind of thing. In the past, it's primarily been investigated as nuisance complaint. When I, I think that it better serves us to investigate it. As a solid waste complaint underneath the WAC code. And then that has a quicker process with it. And then I can go directly with the property owner. And we can work with them on that. There's a lot of backup in nuisance payment. And I'm just thinking that. If some of those can be, be switched over to code compliance, then I can work those without having. Well, right now, we don't have the resources to do a big piece. So. But we do have the resources to do code compliance. Any questions?
I do have one question for anybody in the room. Ecology, how do they handle investigations? It's not just preparing their, let's say they give a permit to somebody pump 5,000 gallons of water out of their well. And they just know for sure somebody's pumping more than that. Do they not have their own person to go out and say monitor said well and write a fine or a fee? Does anybody know? Or are they going to call the county, tell the county, we have to go out and double check regulations they put in place? That sounds, but it's mild than what they want to do.
That is a good question. Maybe somebody that has a little bit more history with that, I do, but that seems to be the case that I.
Yeah. I would say at least from my experience, they. They generally don't like to get into enforcement if they can. If they can go have us do it, that's their preferred consent. We're the best. They do have enforcement authority. They do have some enforcement arm with the agency, but I think it's, I think it's a resource issue.
They do want somebody else to do that.
Right.
I can't imagine they don't have any kind of enforcement branch if they wanted to do that by all means for power to.
Sorry, my iPhone died.
Kill time for you, sir.
Thank you. Lim, I was just looking at your notes and it says, now I gotta find it again. You closed out. 31 case, oh, I guess 31 cases were opened in 2021, but you closed out 34 cases just last month. And 18 of those being open were closed. How many cases have you actually closed since you took the position?
Good question. I'd have to go back and refer to my notes on the pre- pre- Michigan.
A few.
Yeah, a few. I would say that it's probably. Out of. Well, I think we started with 184, 185 or something like that. I think it's got to be somewhere around the 70 mark. If not a little bit more. But I do have those exact numbers. I can give those to you.
I was, I was thinking that we started with 180 and there's still like about 85 open. So you've. Closed out half of the cases that we've had. I just wanted to say, great job.
Well, thank you. It's, it's, yeah, I think, you know, the past officers, they've had a very organized system. I was really impressed with the way that they, you know, of course, there is a systematic way to do this, but they, they, they made the cases, they went right down the ladder. On those, I'm hoping, and one of the questions I do have for the PA's office is, can those cases that did go to abatement? Can the information in there be transferred over to code violation now? The cases that didn't go to abatement, that the commission or the commissioners did not grant an abatement. Approval to. Those cases, my understanding, they will never, didn't go through the process. But the ones that did, that are just, they're staked, they're just sitting there. And so if they're still within that three year limit of statute of limitations where it was still being worked, there was, wasn't really a three year break in that. Could that be transferred over to code violation and then I can go ahead and continue to work that and work property owner on that. So. We'll see where we're, where we're at with that. There, I just sent it in last week, the request. So David, David's been reviewing that.
Are there any other questions for my seatmates for Mr. Pratt?
Yes, sir. Great job.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Lim.
Mr. Chair, if I could. In my, my former role as chair, I. What's his name? What's his? I was looking for your title. Never mind. To come and. Suggested he come and make his request to the full board. So if you would, if you would entertain.
Please.
Thank you, Commissioner Soder. The last week, this is Rob Van Klee, HR and Administrative Services Director, and Jeff Rowe, IT Manager. We were notified last week that one of our two information technology system administrators has taken another job. So we're here to request permission to refill the position. We have not. This week, physical in HR has not put together the process that we discussed in the recent meeting. But I do have some information for you. One is the general fund funded position 2022. Soon to be vacant position is the primary contact for eight of the county departments. Civil service, clerk commissioners, emergency management, HR, prosecuting attorneys, Superior Court, and extension. This position is the primary person for 22 of our 71 servers. And 18 of our 34 major software programs. So it's a significant position. The last time we had an opening for one of these, it took six months to recruit somebody. So we're willing to answer any other questions that commissioners might have. Regarding this position, it would be, it is a grade 43 and we would be requesting steps one through step five. Based on the uniqueness and difficulty in the past of filling for these positions.
My teammates have any questions?
Would it be cheaper just to buy? Something like half inch chain in the shackle? And not let the person leave? It might be hard.
Apparently my begging didn't work, so.
Right. Can I beg? If you're listening, can I beg? Now, I, it's needed. It's unfortunate.
Yeah, I would, I would say, yeah, it's, it's needed. I know we talked about, you know, future vacancies in departments that we wanted to have a little more scrutiny on. You know, when folks come in to replace those, we have, as you had stated, we actually have got that process together yet. And I just can't, you know, particularly the statistics that you stated to us, I don't see any way how we can operate without refilling this position. I think there could be serious consequences. To not filling this. So I would, I would support trying to refill this position as well.
I guess I would add for my seatmates, an option or an idea, or because in the past, this position has been so hard to fill. And as we have hopes to. Go through a salary survey in the new year.
Stable salary survey.
Right. So. I guess I would say, I think we should be looking at where this position is with comparables and make sure that we're offering. What we should be offering to get the right person at the door that might save us from waiting six months or nine months. But in doing so, we would have to also understand that the other person that has this position, it would be only fair to move them up at the same time if it shows to.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're 60 days out at least from getting a final report and recommendation to the commissioners. While I appreciate that significantly, I think we can word the closely in such ways that we look with others as well. That there is a salary review that's been conducted in this position. It's in that salary. Preliminary shows that I've seen, this is one of the positions that's under market. But I can't good conscience ask you to raise one. 100 other employees waiting for similar results or the report. But I think we can work in such a way in their interview process for those that, let them know. And I did share this with the outgoing employee. But I didn't give him any numbers that I anticipated would be important in the next 60 days. He understood that and appreciated it. So just not sure how we would do that for one position, not all others. But I think we can word it in such a way. And when we talk to Apple, so that the position is. That we're close to bringing you a recommendation in general, this position is included in that study.
That would, that would be my issue is, is so if we hire somebody, say a step four, and then we go through this other process, they're already a step four. And we paid them what we think they're worth. And then once. And we've paid them what we think they're worth, and then once we go and we amend the, the base rates, now this person's still gonna be at a step four. Or five, or potentially, I see some potential conflict with that, but I'm sure you can find a way through that. With that, um, seatmates, is everybody a yes for advertising? That is three yeses, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. And I think Mr. Chair Erin might be on the phone. She notified HR she had a. These one position to refill, so it's up to you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, but I think she may want to address it now or when appropriate as well.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that we take a three-minute recess?
Yes, sir. We will recess for three minutes. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with all three items.
And we'll second that motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with three items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, let's move on to the payment approvals and pay estimate change orders.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we pay a pay estimate number twenty to Kirby Nagelhout Construction Company, the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Which excludes retainage and the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, fifty-three cents. And includes sales tax, the amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. For a total payment about two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents. For the county services building project contract number C zero three, one, two, zero. I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in figure, favor of paying pay estimate to number twenty to Kirby Nagelhout Construction Company, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Could you ever talk to Erin? This was what we were gonna do before we went to that.
That is what we're gonna do now.
Thank you. I thought you guys forgot me, but thank you, Dan, for remembering. So one of our staff in Golden Dale has put in their resignations, they'll be done, I think, next Thursday. So we're asking to. Refill that position, so it's a clerical admin assistant free. They're the, they're face of environmental health in Golden Dale, so like to get that going if possible. It is already budget, budgeted for two thousand and twenty-two and will continue to be paid in the same manner it has been in the past.
Do we have one, how many clerical assistants do we have in environmental health? We have one in Golden Dale and one in White Salmon? There any discussion, gentlemen?
Was this one of the grant-funded positions?
All of our positions are grant-funded.
Oh, yours?
This year.
This year, just this.
No, I mean, they always have been, right? So it goes, your time gets charged to where you're working, so.
Right, just clarification, of course.
Yes, no, I appreciate it.
I asked everybody, don't take offense.
Nope, I did not. I am happy to answer that question.
Anything, Commissioner Sodder?
Now, certainly necessary. Who's budgeted for, it's needed. I'm a yes.
All right, you have three yeses, that sounds like there, Ms. Quinn.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do either of you gentlemen have any new business? Or unfinished business, or board pending? Anything you want, Mr. Sodder?
Would be just to confirm, we're gonna, uh, our plan is to have a discussion about the Board of Health. Make up and the current vacancy on Thursday. During our workshop or after our scheduled workshop. Correct. A part of our scheduled workshop, a new topic, not budget-related.
And I'd like to ask, Director Quinn, will you be available for that?
Uh, yeah, I didn't know that was happening, but I can, no, I will not be available for that. Sorry, I apologize. Um, I can, I didn't know that was happening. Can that, is there?
We didn't either.
Pushed for the next week so I can attend?
Do we have a budget, the net, or hearing anything the next week? I can't get to my calendar right now.
Can we have on Tuesday, I'm sure. We could squeeze it in on the following Tuesday. I don't know that, I mean, it's up to you guys. I don't care either way.
We have till July, correct, but we have one position that's open that we need to fill.
We have one position that's open. It's not by law mandated that we fill. But if we are gonna fill it, we should fill it with somebody that qualifies starting July one. There was also still a possibility that the July one deadline is pushed back because of. Lack of clarity in law.
My understanding is that they haven't solidified it yet, and so unless you guys got different information, that the, the guidance was mostly done, but not final.
Yeah, I mean, that is, the, that would be on the future board makeup, but we, I mean, we definitely have a vacancy in the current Board of Health. As configured right now, that we need to. At least have a discussion about how we're gonna fill that vacancy. Which I'm fine with waiting, putting it in next, next Tuesday is fine.
We wanna do it like Tuesday morning in a workshop, or do you want to do it Tuesday? Morning?
Tuesday morning's fine for me. Quinn, are you available next Tuesday morning, I guess I should ask?
I absolutely am.
Okay.
For sure this time.
All right, let's, uh, we'll add it to our agenda. Thank you. Okay, um, any other issues, pending issues from my through you? Okay, um, is the treasurer in the room?
No. Physically in the room. Yes, yeah, watching the snow fall.
Take my mask down. So we had our final, uh, finance committee meeting with Commissioner Sodder for the year of twenty twenty-one on Friday. Got rescheduled because of the, uh, because of the holidays, so we have that on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. And during the meeting, uh, there was appreciation of Mr. Cock, Mr. Sodder for his, Commissioner Sodder for his.
His history, yeah.
Yeah. And so Brenda, the auditor, and I both appreciated that, and we're looking forward to Mr. Anderson, Commissioner Anderson coming on. At the next meeting. We talked about an old, a topic that was from previous was the Dowsport wastewater facility that has been discussed. That was kind of one of the main topics of the meeting that had been, we had had it at the end of one or got brought up, and so we put it on this agenda. Um, I think the questions were kind of financially, where was that at? That is a, a fund that is a challenge for the auditor and myself. We've had discussions with the board, um, in other meetings and workshops. Um, and there has been a discussion of, you know, looking to do something different with that facility, and I think the question from, and it came from. Just what, what's the plan? From where are we headed to? Uh, there was a discussion that there's a rate base or rate study that is going on right now. To increase the rates in order to make the system more viable. Um, and then the, the key thing, which I really wanna clarify, is the payment of the debt. Because I think we had agreed we were going to pay the debt off early, and I just want, we, we all kind of during the discussion wanted to make sure. We were having that, um, that we were all on the same page, that we, you know, that we remember all having the discussion, but that we all finalized it to that point. Um, and paying the debt off, and then kind of that next step was the question, whether there's. A committee or what the board would do, or is the, the board need what they like to finance committee, which is the auditor and the treasurer and the board chair. To have a discussion and, you know, to, to kind of do anything different, if that's not the board. It was kind of where does this go to, I guess, was really the conversation. Cause I don't know that it's a finance committee thing, it just was a conversation because we're all finance committee members and deal with the Dowsport wastewater facility. That that's kind of where it stemmed from. So I wanted to confirm, I guess, that we did want to pay off. I, I believe that that's the direction that we wanted to go, that we wanted to pay off the debt. For that, the remaining, there's one more payment to S R F, I believe, um, and that we wanted to do that, and, and that's what we put in the budget, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, for me, that's as, as possible. The check can be written tomorrow, that'd be better.
Uh, and then, uh. The next question would be, where, where does that go? What's the next steps? Is there, you know? And, and I guess that was just kind of, it's more of a, I guess you're.
I'm raising my hand up in the chair. I was letting him finish, and then I, I was gonna call on Commissioner Sodder.
You're like, I'm like, the commissioner's raising their hand, what do I do? I lost, oh, about the, yeah, cause we did discuss in there, you know, typically, this is a public facility. Its disposal would be, or surplusing, or whatever we're doing with it. Would typically be handled, uh, it's a public facility, we through Public Works, but we were kind of wondering about capacity. Uh, as far as being able to timely, uh, get through a process to look at. And so we were thinking, you know, we were just speculating on, do we need somebody else, a committee or somebody to kind of handle this? Obviously, work with Public Works, uh, because this is their, I mean, it's their facility. But not, they wouldn't necessarily be in charge of how we were gonna. Get rid of it, unload it. So that's what we really wanted to bring up, I mean, what folks thoughts were, who should be, because we, I think. You know, the first thing was pay the debt off, because we can't even consider, um, surplusing it until the debt is paid. And so I think we had all, which we've now confirmed, we budgeted for it, get it paid off the sooner, the better, because then we can start that process. Whether it's an R and P process to look at, is there other, are there other entities besides the P U D? That might be interested in taking it on or acquiring it? I mean, it's a significant asset, uh, for somebody, particularly if the rate setting gets done and the service area gets expanded to include Murdoch. You know, I don't know that there's other, you know, whether, maybe the port would be, I mean, it would have to be a public entity of some sort, because it is a public facility. But that was the topic we wanted to bring up and see, somebody's gotta ram on this thing to get it done, besides the treasurer writing check.
Commissioner Sodder, have you, have you met with the city or the community council down there and discussed this?
I don't have any direct recollection of that as far as, I think I brought up that, you know, the payment was gonna be, you know. The system was gonna be paid for. I probably alluded to the, you know, the county would, we don't wanna be in the wastewater business, that's not what we do. And that we would be looking, but as far as to anybody besides the P U D, I don't believe I raised that as even a possibility.
Mr. Christopher?
I, I would say, if we need a committee, we need a committee. If one commissioner wants to take this project on and pressure Public Works, or however this needs done. To get it done, uh, as expediently as possible. I, I would like to. Move faster than I've seen government work so far. Possible, but.
So I would say, while I wanna move fast, this is a significant asset that the county has. That you can take loans against, that you could do a lot of things with. And to just give it away is, you know, is heartening in, in a bit. Cause somebody is gonna take that, change their rates and start making money on it. And, and I think so, so while we wanna have those conversations, I think the appropriate commissioner would be Commissioner Sodder, since he has the most experience with the thing.
My worry is just if we don't move on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If we don't move on this, we're gonna be paying for others.
Right. And I would, I would, you know, this is a significant asset, and I think we need to, I think we could be expedient. But also, but be diligent too, as far as I think, you know, and let's not forget. That, that the bottom line is this, this system serves all those residents of Dowsport, and that was the whole purpose of why the county. Got involved in the first place, because nobody else was gonna do it. And so there was a problem that the county stepped up and fixed. And so, you know, we're seeing the kind of fiscal and the headache of it and all that, but at, at the end. It is providing a really important service to those citizens, and I just don't want us to forget that. Even if it is a pain in the, you know what, as far as to deal with that. But yeah, I mean, I would be happy, not happy, I would be, but. I will accept the responsibility, uh, to try to, and I don't wanna, and I don't wanna characterize this as. You know, throwing rocks at Public Works, because I'm not, I don't believe the board is doing that at all. They do an excellent, they need to be involved in this, this is a public facility. But there's a lot on their plate right now, and I think that's the kind of the, looking at options, that that kind of stuff is something that we can do. To kind of help them out.
And I think from the finance committee, that wasn't the gist of that conversation either. It wasn't that, there was, it was more of the, the. Paid off some of the bonds that we've been discussing financially from the state audit, it is a pain in the, right, for the auditor and the treasurer with balancing and the working of it, right?
That's really all they care about.
It was, yeah, no, it's not, but.
Two thirds of the fight against.
So that's how it came up. So it was mostly just kind of, we discussed it before and where this was going, and so, and so that was the, the piece, so.
What was the final answer? Were you, were you doing it, or were you finance committee doing it? We're, we're, I, I defer to your guidance. Chairman did as well, but I could be.
Um, I think the finance committee has a role as far as the fiscal piece of it. The physical facility that they don't really, that's not their duty. That would be, and I think that would be. And if it's, if we want, if I, I mean, I would, but why would be working? The finance committee and the financial pieces of it, yet Public Works on the physical pieces of it. As far as what the process is to, you know, and, and frankly, do some brainstorming about what's even possible. And really, I wanna talk to the prosecuting attorney as well, because it is a public asset. There may be some restrictions, maybe not, I'm speculating. About who is eligible. I think if it's being surplus, it could honestly, it could go to anybody if they're actually, we're getting some value for it. If we are basically giving it away, we can't gift public resources only to another public candidate. My layman. Assumption, because it generally is that way.
Mr. Christopher?
The last I remember the board's direction on this was incorrect, if I'm wrong. Is that we were looking to sell, not give away, at least to start with. Is that correct?
I think it's, I think our, my recollection is, you know, we wanna get the very best deal we can for both us and the citizens. And that is, I mean, it's, you know, we invested billions and millions of dollars. I started, what, yeah? Yeah, just clarification, thanks, sir.
All right. Continue, please, good treasure.
Um, and so that was a discussion. Um, we then moved along and talked about the budget. And mostly the conclusion of two thousand and twenty-two, but mostly the. Beginning of two thousand and twenty-three, Jen reported that she will be, uh, having some meetings and budget build meetings, I believe they're this Thursday. But beginning in January of two thousand and twenty-two for the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Um, and that we, she's looking at financial policies and ways to deal with financial policies that are sometimes buried in. But, uh, budget resolutions so that we can have them, so we can kind of see them in other.
that are sometimes buried in, uh, but, uh, budget resolutions, so that we can have them, so we can kind of see them in other ways, and not necessarily change, just so that they're more, so we can see where they are. So she's gonna go through that, she was reporting on that. Um, then we talked about that, um, Friday was a banking day, so, um, Friday the thirty-first, um, two of my staff and myself, we had a conference call, we did some final deposits and everything for the, uh, for the office, because we, I think we thought it was, the banks were closed, but they were not, so I'm gonna federal, when a holiday falls on a Saturday, the Federal Reserve is still open, the previous writing, so it was not a banking holiday, banks won't open it, so we were getting deposits, and we wanted to get those received in for the end of the year. You got things worked out with the auditor as far as. Yeah, yeah, my big thing, yeah, the bottom line is we got the receipts done, that was the main thing. Um, and then, uh, Jen and I continued, we are working on, um, looking at historical sales tax specifically back to the planes, that was one of the pieces, and um, we hope to resume that and have something shortly, uh, on that. Um, Brenda updated that she believes that we're nearly in local state audit, and that we will be having that come through processes through. And then we set, set our next meeting for one fourteen at nine A M, uh, for January fourteenth at nine A M. Uh, and I invited Mr. Anderson to that, uh, so we should be kind of transitioning to all the parts and pieces. Um, in the treasurer's office, a couple of things to note, um, we are continuing to head towards our foreclosure sale, which is February fourteenth online for assets, uh, similar to how we've done, uh, when we did the, uh, tax title property.
Really, you're selling off foreclosed properties on that one?
That's the date it starts, it doesn't finish that day. It starts then, and I think it goes for four days or something like that, but that's the opening bid, so yes, it opens on the fourteenth.
I think so, because I love your life.
Now, let's remember, these foreclosures, we've been working on that for three years, so, so this is not like.
You heartless.
Um, I can't remember why I chose the fourteen. Maybe because it was easier.
Yeah.
Um, and there are six, I think it's Tuesday, and it goes through the problem, I think. Um, and there's six properties that are still on there, so we'll be doing some advertising on that going through. Um, we are, the the assessor has frozen the values, so we're not doing any more changes to the system while they're gonna work now on the levies. We'll get the taxes, I believe, uh, by statutes that were fifteenth or sixteenth, somewhere, or January fifteenth or sixteenth, that we then started, by the time they're supposed to have the levies done, to us to start doing the taxes, so usually about two weeks from now, we'll start to get the taxes, and we'd like to have that done towards the end of January, uh, first of February, it's a tax statement out of March, March, uh, first. Um, those are the only things that I have. Are there any questions?
Mr. Christopher.
Um, I don't find it a great question, but do you have any updates on the properties, the county of the White Salmon or the Pat Mill? Who went there at all?
I I don't, I don't, that's one of the things that after the holidays, I want to try to get those, that's, I'm hoping to get those things to you guys here in the next couple of weeks, because we got a little bit of lull between the tap in this next little bit, so, um, and and the ones you're talking about is the mill site, and which ones?
The the White Salmon property, stairs up the hill.
Oh, yeah, 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 I have, I we have, I've got that, yes, the one that we got sold to the city.
And and also the triangle piece there in Dallasport.
Triangle in Dallasport. Yes, no, my hope is to, I I got the, all the parts and pieces for the White Salmon one kind of put together, I want to hopefully be able to finish that up, and the mill site, and I will add to it the triangle, I think I might.
Okay, because we're gonna try to get something together with the communities, um, there in, um, click a tat, so if you, the, that's the priority for, for at least for me right now.
I agree, the earlier we know, the better, and that we be.
And and the and the concern that I have is, going back to that one, and and that's going back, there's not a, there's not a question that it's a foreclosed, a tax titled property. The concern that I have and what I really want to get hammered out is all the dollars of where everything's gone and passed, but so that we just, as a, as the trust of it, we have an accounting that we can somewhat agree to before we roll on down. So, yes. We'll finish. Okay, anything else?
No other questions here? I've got it on the fourteenth for for me, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Treasurer Gallagher.
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on, prosecuting attorney Canal, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. The principal issue I had was that wanting some clarification on the intent of the county, uh, moving forward with the, with the uh, the conveyance of the property lot two down in Dallasport from the Lyle School District. So now that that's firmed up, I am gonna track down the original, um, copies, at least to make sure we're not missing anything, in case it didn't show up on the title report, um, just in case. The attorneys for the school district are, she's on vacation till next week, so we have a little bit of time on that. Um, otherwise, the weather, uh, did delay court, and we we did have a video, um, court session yesterday. The first and third Mondays of every month are the scheduled, uh, dockets for the felony, uh, matters in in Superior Court. Um, both, I think, one of the public defenders and the judge were not able to make it, and then, uh, with the once we received notice of the closure, we moved to a video conference system, um, that that, you know, the, there, there, there's a lot of, I think, a lot of confusion out there when that message, when I was closed, that that doesn't necessarily dictate, uh, that the courts, um, um, will, um, not hold session, so there might be, you know, I would, um, caution, the board might want to consider the judiciary and 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 being involved in some of those conversations, but and then the trials that were scheduled for tomorrow morning, uh, got bumped back two weeks, um, to the nineteenth, which is extremely unfortunate, because now we're, um, um, you know, the the backlog's been an issue for the last two years now, and it's getting substantially worse. Um, we still have the position open for the D P A. Uh, we're just, we're not receiving any interest. I think about two thirds of the counties are advertising for D P As, it's extremely difficult to get young people to want to be a prosecutor nowadays, so, and, um, you know, our pay puts us about in the middle of the pack, uh, so it's very frustrating. Um, and then otherwise, uh, a lot of good work getting done by Chief Deputy Wall, my, uh, office administrator's been um, really, Janet Matulovich has been really key in keeping, you know, some of the coordination going on, about half my staff lives on the West End, half on, on the Golden Hill area, so that's always difficult in adverse weather, um, situations, but we've been utilizing the Pioneer Building, we've, and our office, um, went fully online within, I think, ten days of the, uh, orig- origination of the pandemic with the lockdowns, we've been, uh, kind of, we can go, um, fully online at any time, um, so that's been certainly helpful, I T's been, um, helpful in the past with that, and continues to be so, so expressed my appreciation on that, also express the appreciation to the courts for being accommodating on that, um, and and we'll, we'll just have to proceed, it's, uh, the, the, it's extremely frustrating time for a lot of folks, um, we, the Blake, um, backlog is still present, I think, you know, we were, we definitely feel confident that we've gone all, uh, outstanding warrants and active, um, active warrants and active supervision warrants, things like that, taken care of, but, uh, we still have the backlog of cases from the seventies, eighties, and nineties, uh, that need to be vacated. I know, um, the the clerk has a lot of valid concerns about possible rushes on on L F Os, but that, um, you know, the, a lot of these folks didn't pay their fines to begin with, uh, but, uh, uh, you know, the, the, the issue's really gonna be on some of the, most of these funds were dispersed to other agencies, for example, it was common in the nineties to have a five hundred dollar investigation fee for law enforcement agencies, uh, that was dispersed, as you can imagine. If it was paid to the law enforcement agency, how are we gonna potentially recover those funds, and then, uh, the, the, the possibility compounding with twelve percent in, in interest by statute is it's a nightmare, and luckily, uh, we're just, uh, dipping our toes in that right now, but, uh, so we're doing our best, um, and, um, that's what I know for now, so, uh, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for my C max?
Oh, good.
None here. All right, do you have anything for executive session, prosecutor Canal?
Uh, this time, no.
All right. Um, is there anything else for the go of the order, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting to Thursday, January sixth at nine A M for budget planning.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries, thank you, everyone, for logging in today. Good luck on your, uh, snow blowing, snow blowing, and choveling.